I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call supervisor, lawyer.
Here.
Councilman Barber. Councilman Carter.
Here.
Councilman Tlosky.
Here.
Councilman Barrett.
I am here in full Christmas spirit.
So, we're trying to make this quick as possible because the weather's getting...
Oh, roads are slick.
Crap, so, um, motion to accept the minutes from the November twentieth regular board meeting.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept those minutes from the November twentieth regular, uh, meeting.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, people addressing the board, nobody, public comment?
Good, you guys good? Thanks for coming every, every month, we appreciate that.
Yeah, we enjoy it and we appreciate you two, you know, because I, I mean, if it was, if it was up to you all the time, it would be a lot easier, but it's not, you know?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, motion to approve the December bills, I will read them off and just to note that this is only half of December, so we'll be doing the other half in January as well as the January bills, okay. Uh, general fund nineteen thousand seven hundred eighty-one and eighteen cents, highway fund nine thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars and one cent, line mountain sewer one thousand seven seventy-four forty-seven, line mountain water seven hundred eighty-six sixty-seven, Danmar water eight seventy-five, Ledgers water nine oh seven forty-four, trusted agency seven twenty fifty-eight, for a total of thirty-four thousand two hundred thirteen thirty-five. And before, I just want to point out trusted agency, we put it in here because there are checks, these are the vouchers that we write, but trusted agency isn't really extra money that the town's paying because those are things that are getting pulled out of the guys' checks. So, we're paying them and then they're paying, you know, we pull it out, so it's not more money, but it, they are vouchers that we write, so I just want to clarify that for everybody and I'll need a motion to accept that.
I'm going to make the motion to pay the top of December monthly bills to the amount of thirty-four thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-five cents.
So I get that?
Any more discussion? Roll call Jim.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Joey.
Yes.
Deb. Yes. Okay, uh, we've scheduled the twenty twenty-five organizational meeting, uh, January eighth is, uh, the date that I've been hoping to have that. Does anyone have any issues with that time?
Nope, I'm good.
Is that a Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday, yep.
And where are we at, four o'clock, five o'clock?
Uh, five o'clock.
Yep.
If that's okay, I need a motion to...
I'll make a motion to, um, hold the organizational meeting, January eighth at five P M.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, thank you, alright, okay, old business. Um, the dam repair, still working on that, we're trying to figure out a time to, uh, do the stem replacement. I'm back in, back in the trenches with FEMA because since it's not the seals that they're going to be working on, but the stem that lowers the gate, I have to change the scope of work in the FEMA documentation and so we're in the process of doing that. Um, in the past, uh, the homeland security, emergency services guys were the ones that were putting all of our stuff into the portal after I gave it to them and they don't know if they can do that anymore, I might have to do it, which I don't know how to do that at the moment, so, uh, we're working on that part of it, but we're also waiting to hear back from, I'm waiting to hear back from FEMA to see how much of what we've already done we have to repeat just because we're changing the scope of work, so, um...
But still do the same cause. You can blame it on that there was trash in there.
Yeah, yeah, the, it, they said that that's not a problem, um, putting it in, but it's, it's just the paperwork has to be right and it has to be read right and we have changed the scope because it's not that. And in the meantime, Seaway Diving is wanting me to order the stem, but if we're not going to get a chance to put it in before spring, I really don't want to have that twenty-foot piece of, you know, threaded rod hanging around in order for it to get damaged before they can put it in, so...
So will Seaway help us with the verbiage to rewrite the grant or is that on our own?
Well, and that's one of the things I wait on Seaway because I, I told them that, you know, they just gave me the dive sheets. I said, "You're going to have to spell out like you did for the first time, you're going to have to give me an actual explanation as to what the problem is" and not just what the dive team said on their dive sheets.
I agree with that.
So I've got three different balls in the air on that one. Um, and because of the time of year, I'm not holding my breath to get answers back real quickly, but we press on. So that's the update on that and FEMA ha, I don't even think they've started looking at the mitigation paperwork to be quite right because of, uh, all the various natural disasters that have happened.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, that's there.
No surprise.
The pickleball courts, I did call a, a different place and, um, they were actually more expensive than these guys. So I think we need to make a, a decision tonight so that, um...
How's that Adirondack place you go?
Yeah.
That was the only place that's closest, I, I did some research, I called Chagay and, uh, that, the, Chagay is the same place Vermont and like I said, that's the only one I could pick up with Hudson one, I didn't call one.
Yeah, I got ahold of them and, and they, to put a court in is like twenty-four thousand, um, and to resurface one that they didn't put in, um, they were really hedgy about giving me a price, but I have a feeling they, that they would come in and say, "Well, we need to redo this, redo this" and I think we, we might as well go with, uh, you know, my recommendation is to go with Vermont.
So on that, at that point, I mean, we're spending twenty grand on two courts, right, basically?
Yep, twenty-one.
What do we have to do to mitigate any type of damage to those courts during winter seasons or, I mean, we got to protect that investment somehow?
Mm-hmm, and I, I talked to, um, uh, Jeff at, uh, Vermont and asked about that, I said, and he said, "It's not the snow or the, or the damp or anything, it's the actual temperature, the cold that will crack the, the courts." And, you know, we're looking at, you know, every five years, I mean, maybe in five years, pickleball will be passe and people want tennis courts back, you know?
When they originally did those, did they take all the abusive tennis courts or did they take everything out and redo it all from?
No, they just, they just went over the, the tar that was there, yeah, so...
Tennis courts were put down on the top, by now, on the top.
So...
So, and so a true, so let's talk about that a little more, a true pickleball court, how, how is the foundation done, do we know?
No.
They don't use asphalt, do you?
I think it's basically the same thing, just, I think it's just a different surface on top, I believe.
It's just, yeah, it's, it's what they put on top that's different, it's a softer surface to get the bounce and whatnot and, uh, that's why it's so easily damaged by kids on bikes and that kind of thing.
So can we camera those two, two sites so we can go after parents that are negligent and keep an eye on their kids?
Yeah.
I'd, I suggest somebody, somebody looking at, doing something mainly, Wolf of Kings already said that we already got a shed over there. I mean, if we had to put something up in our name, there's, there's got to be something out there.
Yeah, well, we, yeah, we, we can, we can, uh, do something because, um, I can get ahold of them because it's probably going to be, you know, they're going to get us, fit us in their schedule, so when we know when they're actually going to come out and do something, then we can, you know, put the cameras up.
You know, I hate, I hate to threaten people, but I think we need to put something out once, once the courts are, or even actually say a month before the courts get, get finished, we need to make it very clear to the residents of, of the whole entire Danmar to use that, that the two sites will be camered and if there's any damage from any negligent use, uh, we will be going after you, uh, for legal action. Okay, so you're recommending we do this?
Yeah, I, well, we're, I've checked and like you said, there's, I mean, this is the, he found one place that was, and they were down...
The rest are all down...
North Hudson?
Farther, that, that was the closest one, North Hudson.
Yeah, down the other side of Queensbury was the next closest place.
We need a motion.
We, we tabled them because we were looking for...
Because I was calling, I was going to contact a couple places up there, but like, so Chagay is the same place as Vermont and he's like, "Yeah, we just put a fence around her" and I was like, "Oh, we got, we lock ours" and he still had damage.
Yeah, we put a fence, but somehow they still get in.
We got a camera.
So...
Alright, I'll go ahead and, uh, make the motion, do we need it in two separate ones because of two separate places or we just make it?
No, we can make one.
Alright, so what is the total for eighty-four, thirty, and twelve, twenty-nine?
Twenty thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars.
So I'll make a motion that we go ahead with the, uh, the, uh, re-coding of the, uh, Hemmer King Park and the Phillips Court Park, a resurfacing with the Vermont Tennis Court Servicing Company for a total of, how much money?
Twenty thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars.
Twenty thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars.
Awesome.
Any more discussion? Roll call Jim.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Joey.
Yep.
Deb.
Yes.
And then, but with that, so, I hate to say this, but with that, do we need any other extending adding motions as far as security cameras and like that, or is that we just want to wait till the next step of that process hits us?
Yeah, let's wait till we get the cameras, you know, when, when we get to that point, we can lay out the regulations for that.
Very good.
I'll research some, maybe some new stuff for mine or something, at least that we got one up there in, in each spot, I think.
Somebody up there break some knees, is there any update on the comprehensive plan?
Yep, I can give you an update on that, um, in this, lucky how this, the dice roll, the day I called Jackie from MJ Engineering, she was actually at the same seminar that, uh, Debbie was at. So, uh, when she told me that she was at the seminar for town supervisors, I said, "Oh, okay, so I'm going to give you a person's name and if you can go look her up, that'd be fantastic," I texted Debbie, I said, "Jackie, who's going to be a probably the spokesperson for MJ Engineering up here, is at your conference" and they connected, the two did connect and I have a scheduled date of January seventh, five o'clock here at this facility. So she called me right back after she talked with Debbie and, uh, she says she's excited to, to help us, they did help Chesterfield, that their process is very, very smooth.
What time did it go?
Five o'clock and, uh, she says, "We do know what we're doing, we've done a lot of them" and, uh, she says, "You, I think you'll be very pleased with our presentation," so I said, "Well, we'll see, we'll see you on, on January seventh, this is a Tuesday."
Put an email out on that?
Yep, uh, you know, so, so Billy Joe, uh, if you could do me a favor, um, my computer dumps emails, uh, every thirty days and it dumped my last group, if you could send me a, a new group or if you want to send it out, that's okay, to all the participants in our committee for January seventh, that'd be wonderful.
Good.
Okay, thank you. So I actually feel good about it, uh, she was good to talk to and we'll just see what happens on the seventh.
Okay, thank you.
Problem.
Is there any E M S update?
So I talked to Zach and we're moving forward with obviously Alex being on, they assigned different people, different jobs and different roles to take over for now, so they fill that position and he's going to be in contact and Lori's going to be in contact and I talked to him and, uh, we decided that we could wait till after the January first to set up a meeting and discuss whatever we need to discuss, but from what I gathered yesterday, I think they're starting in January, two nights a week in Lion Mountain. I want to say they're going with Wednesday and Thursday, kind of it.
Good.
But they'll be up there two days a week and they're going to be using our ambulance, so that'll be on the road. And they go up there quite a bit now and they have been, and then they stayed up there for, what was it, two weeks almost for the whole episode that had going on in Danmar for a little while, so the only one issue is, I tried working on is getting our ambulance used a little more and this doesn't fit Danmar station, so we can't just swap them out, so it's kind of a, but when they come up there to use it, they're two days a week that they're up there and they're still doing great checks on that and it's, I think it's starting, it's a little bit better run, but I think it's on up and up and, for now.
So if the curtain pulled up in front of us, looks like Alex will just stick in the hood.
I think he just had too much, he just carried on too much, too many jobs and too many roles and was getting paid too much to not do a job.
Yeah.
Pretty much, but...
Good.
That's good, um, water district two update, we got a couple issues in, uh, that district east of the village. Um, the same one we had last year with the lines freezing and that property. Um, I did ask, reached out to Matt to see if, you know, what we could do about them, about that legally and, um, he said that, uh, we could, best route would be to send the homeowners a hold harmless letter basically explaining what happened last year, how much the town paid to fix a problem and that we anticipate the same potential issue this year if they don't leave the water running and if it happens again, because the water's not running, the town won't be responsible for any fixes that need to occur and explain to them the water bills by unit so they don't have to incur any additional costs from leaving the water running and, and he said they'll send it certified and regular, I don't know how much legal ground that would hold, but at least, um, to send it out will, uh, get them, and he's not an easy person.
No, he's not a very easy person to deal with, but the water is running in the house since last year. Uh, I got ahold of Randy and whoever the big guy that lived there, and he let me in the basement, it was just...
So the water's running down there?
But like I told him, that water feeds that little restaurant, that comes from his basement.
Mm-hmm.
We're not liable for that, that freezes, that's something that was put on, out on us, pumped his water out of the house.
Yep, and, yeah, and I also told him, when I talked to him on the phone, I said, "You got a sewer issue too because somebody put in a..."
Sewer line and blown the water in.
Yeah. So that was something that was done, uh, well, I could, I figure I know who did that, but...
Old lady Brad did all the work there.
So, anyway.
So what's, what is, what is in the new restaurant, what is that, they barely redesigned.
I just got the, a menu there today.
It's for like colds.
It's bowls, so you can get potatoes or pasta, then you can add a meat, then you can add a vegetable, they have poutine, they have hamburgers, cheeseburgers, um, fish burgers.
French fries.
French fries, poutine.
I think it's a...
Not a lot of options, yeah, they have breakfast, they offer breakfast, they have a breakfast sandwich.
Yeah, he used to work outside crew, he's there.
Yeah, under Gero, he had the place up here in Chisely Lake, I remember, that's where the garage is right there, two car garage, they dismissed all place, okay, he redid all that and sold it, he put that, that like modular thing in or whatever, same too.
Both, okay.
Before we get out of old business, I just...
Or, uh, did they work with?
Before they bought it from my parents, it's very cool.
Before we leave old business, do we have any intention of trying to, um, compel something with the village to, to complete something with the village or are we just not going to do that or for the comprehensive?
Do we have a plan?
Um, that's up to you, I mean, if you want to pull them into it, I...
I don't know about pulling them in.
Oh, about expand, I haven't had a chance to talk to Sean about if, seeing if we can expand as, um, let me make a note because I forget that every time.
I mean, if theirs was updated, if they ever do fold there, we do observe that old village, that would be nice, that was updated.
Well, I mean, if they have a pretty good set of ground rules, it'd be something, probably be a lot less money too, but... I guess we have to see how old it is and what it really is first, just take a look at it, maybe I stop in and just get a copy of it.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, let me give him a call, I just...
I mean, you know what, probably in a second breath, Mike, to your point, it might be something that we run by, uh, this Jackie lady regarding, uh, the village being so close to us.
The first guy there, uh, from AES, he was saying we should incorporate him, but, uh, obviously he didn't know that the village already has something in place, so, or we could have probably asked him that question, but...
Yeah.
It's all hindsight now, but we still got, we still got some time before we need to pull it all together.
Yep.
But I will talk to Sean, um...
You want to go back to your district two, that water show up, do you want to reach out to the, check with the village, with the village?
See if they can get it up, yeah, you want to do that?
Or bait him for the sewer.
Right.
Just give you a man or a woman, bring him back over, be a little closer and try to do this stuff better.
Yeah, do you want to do that or you want me to?
Yeah, I'll get him.
Okay, thanks, yeah, we've got a, some, a, a resident wants to shut, wants to leave their house for this winter and they want the curb stop shut off, the curb stop has been hit by equipment over the years, not ours, it's, it's way in their driveway um, and it's bent, the cover was knocked off, it's packed with dirt, so they can't shut, can't shut it off because they can't reach it, so, uh, need to dig it and, uh, Brock's solution wants to dig down, try to cut it off where he can dig out enough of the dirt to shut the curb stop off and then in the spring replace the curbs.
Bigger it down, replace it.
After, after that, you got a machine there, I would just do it and be done with it.
I think he was trying to avoid like a boil water kind of thing because...
Well, you don't break the line, it's just a valve sitting on the ground, that's it's over with.
Yeah, well, if you, yeah, if you're going to...
We'll see what those guys are doing.
Good, okay, any other old business? New business, Parents Night Out, we have another one coming on Friday night, five to eight, if you have kids, grandkids, neighbors' kids. Um, come, we had, we had a good time last time, we only had a couple kids here, but we had a lot of fun, ate some pizza, ate some popcorn, had some punch, had some ice cream, raised a little heck.
That was the balance hours.
Yeah, so, again, it's from five to eight, right here and, uh, Billy and I are two of the babysitters and we will keep them in line, so... There's some of our handiwork right there, yeah, the, the hands that we, the turkeys we made, so, um, the vehicle purchase. I sent that out, I don't know what you all think of that particular vehicle, um, like I said in my email, um, right now there's a, I think it's on a lot of the Ford trucks, um, the backup cameras, there was a glitch in some of them, so they've got a hold on, they've got recalls to people who own Ford trucks already and then they have a hold on these, on any new ones that haven't sold until they fix the problem. The ones that are sitting on the lot here don't have a problem, that's, they've already been checked. Um, this particular one, it's a new vehicle, so it's got full warranty. Um, it's, those Mavericks, I think they're on, well, when I went there, I said thirty thousand was our, kind of our price point that we were looking at and so the only things on the lot that fall under that are these little Mavericks and, um, Escapes. Uh, this, this would fit us a lot better, it's got a little bed in the back, if you've seen Skip Maggie driving around in a little truck, it's basically that, but a lot newer, um, Skip's is on his last leg, I think. Um, but I sent you all pictures and I sent you this stuff, so, um, the funds for this, because, uh, we have, we put money into the highway budget to purchase a vehicle, they want the truck that we had here, the F-150, um, so we'll give them the F-150 and then use this one, uh, for, um, for our, our use here as well as, uh, grounds can use it too. It's got tow package on it, a four thousand pound...
Oh, it's the gross of it, huh?
Yeah, four thousand pound rating on it, uh, for towing, um, and, uh, you know, even, like I was saying, down the road, you know, we don't know how long Pat's truck's going to last, he has a pretty low bar for what he drives, so, um, but sooner or later that truck is not going to be able to be hobbled together anymore and this would actually be usable for him down the road if we wanted to, uh, push it off onto him and it would be a lot cheaper as it ages, uh, for that district than to buy him a new truck, so, you know, looking, looking in the future, trying to see where we can get handy downs.
We'll be taking that thirty thousand budget in the highway department.
Yeah.
Plus whatever.
Yeah.
Extra top of that.
Couple bucks.
And this is the state contract, so we don't have to go, you know, do a bid or anything like that. Um, of course, the state contracts, you know, they don't make much money, I think he, and he told me, he went and looked it up, he says, "Uh, I think we make like a hundred dollars on this truck, we sell it state contract."
I don't ever leave those vehicles. I don't care about these.
Yeah, I, I'm aligned with you, Mike.
Hey, give me the truck, hey, Zola.
Yeah, but, anyway.
Well, I'll make a motion to go ahead and purchase that thing, it'd be a good asset for you guys and, um, you gotta, like I say, anybody got training or something, when you gotta run and do business in class where you shouldn't be using your personal vehicle, in my opinion, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to go ahead on state contract to Riley Ford for the purchase of a Ford Maverick, uh, for thirty-one thousand three hundred seventeen and fifty cents.
Second that.
Any more discussion?
So is there, I know you had an email out, said something about, they had it on hold for a recall?
Yeah, it's on, it's on hold because there's a, there's a nationwide recall on the, these, this one and some, a couple other vehicles because of the backup camera, uh, malfunctions and so, like I say, they checked, this one's already been checked out, it's fine, but it's one of those things where they can't sell it until the recall's lifted.
Tech bolt, yeah, tech bolt.
Yeah, and he thinks it, it shouldn't be much longer because it's, um, I know, uh, Toyota had one on, on some of their vehicles and it was about a three-month wait and, but that was airbagged, so it was a much more crucial thing, so...
Good.
Very good.
Any more discussion? Roll call Jim.
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Joey.
Yep.
Deb.
Yes. Second call, thank you, um, yeah, and, you know, um, the water and sewer guys go down for training a couple times a year and they've been taking that, you know, they usually take the old truck and, and, uh, so this would be good for them too because, um, again, anytime people go to training or whatnot, they use a vehicle and then honestly, that old truck is a...
Yeah, it is. Are you, are you gonna?
For all his rounds or goes, does he takes them out?
He's, yeah, well, he...
Turns them out?
Are you going to go ahead and put in the, uh, computer-based module on it too?
The, uh, yeah, we can put a GPS in it, is that what you mean, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
My house, paperwork, you have to cook them.
This might be new, it's like, I'll have to check with them, they, you know, sometimes the vehicles have their own that you can put on your phone and we might be able to just do that.
I don't know, yeah, that's, that's getting geared, he has Ford passes on that.
Yeah, it is, Ford passes on this, so...
You should have put the app on your phone.
Yeah.
Try to get it on.
Good.
I'm pretty sure it says Ford pass on there. Yep, Ford pass connect, good, it's on there, one way or the other, we'll track it. Okay, thank you on that, uh, budget adjustments, uh, Leslie has come in a couple of days, uh, to help Billy uh, with the end of year wrap-ups, zeroing out accounts, that kind of thing, um, obviously she couldn't show her that in May because it wasn't at year-end, so, um, when we have the meeting on the eighth, we'll have some budget adjustments for your approval, uh, just to keep, zero out the accounts as usual. And then the new town policy, this was just handed down, um, I sent you all a, a copy, mine I didn't, but you all have a copy there. Basically, it's on release, release of employee-related information under foil, basically, if we get notified... Basically, if we get notified that they want some, that, um, and this has to do with state agencies, that kind of thing. If uh, somebody that used to work for us applies for a job at the post office and they wanna, you know, and they contact us, foil us for any disciplinary action or whatnot. Um, we would release that and, but this is all about how we let the employee or past employee know. That we released information that they have, that was on them. So that's all this is, is, um, you know, we've always released information to state agencies, federal agencies, uh, on, on people's records. But this, now there's a, everyone has to have a policy on how they're going to contact the employee. Or e- or past employee on the fact that we released information and, um, if they want it, we give them the information that we released.
Hmm.
That kind of thing.
So has this, this came down from the state that we can't have to do this?
Yep, yep.
Cause I'll tell you, in the private sector, this is like a big no-no, you don't release employees, past employees. Records whatsoever, they're sealed and you, and if they ask you, was he a good employee, you can't even say that. You can say, no, the person decided to just go on his own and uh, gave his notice, that's all you can say in the private sector.
No, no.
Wow.
No, this came down from the state, um, uh, Chris Ketzel, uh, was on our, uh, our Zoom on Monday. Um, and he's the, uh, executive director for the New York AOT, Association of Towns.
That's something.
And that came down, um, so anyway, I just, I've given it to you to take a look at, because when we do our organizational meeting, we'll have some. You know, we'll do a quick review of the, our current policies and then, um, and we'll do any new policies that we have. This is the only new one that we, that we have so far, but.
Actually, an eye opener for me.
So, but for your reading enjoyment.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else for new business? All right, I separated it like this because I wanted everyone to know, some of you have probably seen it on Facebook already. But uh, this year, the Clinton County Historic Society has chosen, um, the Pump House. As the thing for their new ornament this year, so, um, if anyone is interested in getting one of these ornaments. You can contact, I guess this coming weekend is their, um, open house, holiday open house at the Clinton County Historic Society. Uh, the ornament, you can order yours when you go there, or you could call them at the Historic Society and I have a. Um, an email address to director at ClintonCountyHistorical.org, so. Just a, a nice thing and they believe it'll be seventeen dollars. So. And all their past ones are still available too, they have one of the Old Stone Barracks, Bloodpoint Lighthouse. Giants Castle, Fantasy Kingdom, the Plattsburgh Memorial Chapel on base, D N H Railroad Station, Immaculate Heart of Mary Church in Cherubusco. Are some of the other ones they have, Plattsburgh City Hall and the Witherell Hotel, whatever that is. So FYI on that one, um, you guys also have your, um, reports from Danielle and Shane. Um, also the, um, monthly report for me, what's in our bank accounts is in there as well and.
The federal rates going down, it's our instrumental blues, went up a four point something, night class.
Night class went, yeah, they went down a little bit.
You know where these things are in the county?
Oh, and that, that's another thing, uh, well, Jim brought it up to me yesterday and uh, we kind of. We kind of guessed what it was and so he called the Car Weiss today.
And uh, he informed that they have four of them, there's one about a quarter mile on your left going down the Blake Road. Where the trailer was across from Willie Hens, Henry Hens.
Mm-hmm.
Scalpan Ice Bowl and it's a, it's an actual weather station, they can photograph, take pictures, look at the road, teletreatment of the road. Um, it's hooked up satellite via cell phone, but they're three thousand dollars a year every year. They got one on top of West Hill and I don't know where the other two were, Randale maybe.
That picks up vehicles too, or it's just an eye?
Just uh, just a camera to look at the road and sense of the temperature of the road, wind speed.
So for somebody like the county where they have these out places that they have to plow, you know, this will give them a heads up that, oh, it's gonna be icy here and.
And they're tied up, but he told me that uh, across the border, they're tied up where those people have them. And they can monitor back and forth each other's cameras as a storm moves in or moves out. So I was, I'm surprised that DOT doesn't have some type of units like that, which would be nice if they did.
Yep.
I think they do in certain areas, like a through lane and stuff like that, but.
I mean, if you get a grab, I think you're for it, it'd be nice to have one or two, but I mean, you don't have much trouble.
No.
Yeah.
But everybody's asking what that is and they see a storm, they know, you know, you know what this pole's doing in the middle of the road.
So, now you all know.
It, it's a good tool, you know, if you're traveling a long ways to go take care of the road and.
Well, especially for the plank road, you know, if they gotta come out and do that, I mean, they're sitting in Plattsburgh and it's raining or it's sunny and it's snowing like a.
Well, I mean, like Driftin' right there, it's always, that's a good spot for Driftin', so it picks it up and it'd be like, alright, you guys, good luck for Driftin' up there, you know?
So if anybody asks what that thing is?
There it is, interesting.
Okay, um, I have a fun thing that I have to tell you. Yep, that's it for me. Uh, Jim, you got anything else?
No, other than we're gonna do some letters though, even if we hand them out, hand over, cause it'd be a little different.
About the.
Water.
Yeah, about that, uh, yeah, yeah, I'll do the letter, I'll send it back, I'll do the letter tomorrow morning, I'll send.
That one else, or the duplex there, get the rest real long.
Yep.
Brock, I'm sure knows that other person next to the road, but they never have a problem, you know, I'm sure they'll.
Yep, last one, last one.
Lot of way, I think, yeah.
So, yep. Um. Jason?
Uh, I've got an article on uh, J C O, saw that and uh, news break there, so I thought I'd read that, it was pretty, they're saying that it was up there now and stuff.
Oh, yeah, yep.
I know everything's good, it's getting cold, bundle up.
Michael?
Race Across America, I don't know, did you read it, Joe, I don't, it's on PBS, I do not know the time, in, like, out, Race Across America? You know the time, Billy?
Yep, it'll be.
And there are a couple of times.
And they're gonna air it Friday and they're gonna air it Sunday.
Time wise?
Um, let me, let's see here, I don't know what's happening. So December twentieth at eight PM and Saturday, December twenty first at seven PM. And then again on Sunday, December twenty second at ten AM, it'll be on Mountain Lake Journal on PBS.
So, good evening.
That is it for me.
And Billy showed it to me. Joey?
Well, I have a, I do, you know, we got, of course, I see it on three seventy four, just like every, every snowstorm that just drives me nuts, but uh, you know, this recent two days of rain. Washed off our roads of salt and, you know, went into the lake. So, uh, the week prior to that, uh, county went down salting. Plowing, salting, five minutes later, second truck from right behind it, plowing, salting, five minutes. So whatever salt they put on, scraped it off, threw it to the side and put down some more salt.
That's the same.
Yep. I don't know what we gotta do to protect that resource that's sitting around on the side of our road, but. It's getting to be a sore point with me, cause I watch it every, I watch it just so many times, that, uh, how many times they salt and they come right over the top of it and plow and salt again.
Yeah, they never just plow, they salt every time, if the truck's moving, they're salting.
Well, you would think they'd have radios saying, listen, I just came down, um, the east side of three seventy four, I plowed, I salted, it looks good. And five minutes later, their second truck comes behind them, plowing and salting again, listen. Think I went and grabbed a beer that day.
There's no more sand, when trucks and tannins run the mountain, it's, it's blue, it's regularly salt, that's it.
But again, there's, there's so much sediment that, uh, relating to the overall quality of our lake, but. It's just falls on deaf ears, DEC can't do a damn thing about any other thing that goes on, or they don't, you do a thing with your dock. But they have no problem putting tons and tons and tons of salt on three seventy four and let it leach into the lake.
And I, I've gone to the salt, you know, the salt, uh, for, um, salt reduction forums that they have and, um. And I've told them, it's the state, quit telling towns to stop using salt.
It is the state.
We mix it, just enough salt to keep the sand from, from freezing. It's the state, and I said, you can follow the state truck and you can watch the salt just bounce all over the place as it comes out of the trucks, because there's nothing weighing it down, there's.
Just the state county is great salt, pretty much, you know?
So.
So I don't know, I just, like I said, I just, I saw that and just, it just drives me nuts to see what it's doing to our wonderful resource we have sitting in front of us and. But I don't know what we gotta do to, to change that, I really don't, I just, uh.
No, but it, they balance it with people who complain, cause the roads are slippery and they're, it's, but.
Bring bike joy back.
What they need to do is to, after, after the first snowfall, lower the speed limit on three seventy four to forty five. Because people still drive fifty five, sixty, like it's the middle of the summer and.
Fifty five is not even anymore.
No, no.
Sixty five.
Sixty to seventy, yeah.
Yeah, and then if they, they hit that bump near my house and if they got something on the back of the truck, out it comes and it's rolling into my yard or.
As far as me being a resident and also on the town board, I, I have sent out some letters to, to Steck and uh, Elise, of course. Elise, she's got one focus now and, and you're never gonna get it back, uh. Yeah, sorry, and uh, and Steck, you know, he's focused on Elise's job, so. I, I don't know, I don't know who, who can help us with the, with the talking out of both sides of their mouth and protecting our resources, but not afraid to put tons and tons of salt into the lake.
I've not heard Steck is looking for that, I did hear a crazy thing about Elise, that they are already preparing her for. A run against Hochul. Cause Hochul's numbers are so weak, that they're gonna put a woman on a woman.
I did not hear that.
Well, I, I had the ATV thing, I don't know if you want to take this on the camera. But we'll talk about, we'll talk about it after the meeting, um, you have anything else, Joey?
No, I'm good, sorry, I just, it's just, I just go nuts when I watch that truck go by.
I hear ya, it's insane.
Am I going backwards?
You are.
What the hell? I'm, I don't know why it's going backwards, but it is, well, there's nothing else anyway, um, any follow up questions, concerns?
Just uh, just a point of departure from what I said before, if the obstacles that you face each and every time we come here, it's just uncanny. And it seems every year it gets more complex, so thank you for what you do.
I appreciate that, go ahead, we all do, we appreciate it greatly.
And, and we've got a, a great board that everybody does something, everybody is, is, um, you know, engaged, everybody's doing stuff. Um, it's not just a, a one person, two person show, it's everybody, so who is to.
No matter how you try, you're never gonna please everyone anyway.
No, never, never. Yeah, so our next meeting is gonna be the organizational meeting on January eighth and we'll join the meeting.
Thank you.
Let me shut this off.
Just a quick five minute.
An executive session?
Need a motion, I'll make a motion once I.
It'll be quick.
Okay, I'll second, I'll favor.
Aye.
Let me shut that off.